Okay, Deborah.
Okay. I called to order the meeting of the Rockport Select Board for June eighth, two thousand and twenty. Due to the pandemic, we are still meeting remotely. The public comments as the agenda, publicized agenda indicates can be sent to the town manager at his address, as noted on the agenda, or it can be provided remotely through the live stream of the meeting. We have a unanimous showing of the board, and the first item on the agenda is the public hearing to receive public comments on the liquor license application for CIC one three, Inc., doing business as Ports of Italy in Rockport, the former helm. So I called to order the public meeting at five thirty-one.
It would be good to review how people can provide comments?
I just did. Oh, did you miss that? People can provide public comments, as I noted a minute ago, to the town manager at wpost@rockportmain.gov or remotely through the live stream. Okay, Bill Post, would you like to introduce Mr. Calandri?
Sure. So on the screen and joining us in the meeting is Sante Calandri, who's the owner of Ports of Italy in Rockport and Boothby Harbor, and Jeff Teal, who I understand is his manager. So I guess I'll just turn it over to the two of them if they want to say anything quickly.
Okay, Sante, you want me to start?
Yes.
Okay, so the, uh, we've been challenged by this pandemic, but we are proceeding to open the end of July. Everything is looking good. One thing that did change, and I guess Sante's already, I need to change the plan a little bit, but we did put an outside deck, which was already pre-approved, but we're gonna wait and do that in a couple of years. But because of everything that's going on, we have accelerated that, and the outside seating will be for the day we open. And so basically, there'll be a lounge area, two dining rooms, and an outside seating area for the restaurant. It's all been reconfigured from, it doesn't look anything like the helm used to look, and but it's gonna be great space. It's very open and has a lot of light and looking out to the Goose River, it's nice.
Mr. Calandri, anything to add?
Uh, no, we are going to do, we are, we are trying to make it the next building on the next to the, how do you call it, to the restaurant. We tried to do a pizza place, but you know, it's something that is working, we are working on, okay? Just because of this pandemic, it changed a little bit the restaurant business. And I don't know what is really working, what it doesn't. And we are on every day thinking about what is going to be, you know? Situation, people go to change their, their, how do you call it, their way to leave too, you know? After, you know, all these two months that people stay home and make a lot of the, maybe to-go or pickup, okay? Pickup stuff, I don't know, they were coming back slowly. I don't know how much it will take to come back, but you know, we're waiting for them, and we see.
The building-
Space inside, much more space, like six feet each table, you know? We don't put too many tables like it's supposed to be, it used to be, you know? We try to give a space to the customer and all the things that the state require, you know, like masks, things, masks, and the cleaning and the menu, you know? Wine list, forget about it, all these things, yeah.
Um, just to add to that, the pizzeria building is the small building that's next to the helm that was also part of the property. And the building inspector has, you know, has signed off on everything that's being done there. Basically, it's gonna be more of a curbside takeout and pizzeria, and it's designed, again, this has all evolved because we're not sure how the public is going to react.
Does the board have any questions? Doug?
Just a quick question, does either Jeff or Sante reside in the mid, immediate mid-coast area?
I live in Boothby Harbor. Sante has just sold his house in Arundel, and he's moving up to the Rockport area.
We have a house, we have a house that we-
We bought a house.
We already bought it privately, but we are in the same, it's very close to the restaurant, it's a house. A house that we use it for, for me and some, maybe some employee that, you know? We live out, yes.
Okay, I guess my question more to the point was, will one of you two gentlemen typically be on-site during operations?
I will, I, for sure, I will be over there most of the time, yes. Yes. Can be in both, in both places, that's for sure. But I decide to be the Rockport place, yes.
Mark, did you have a comment?
When we get to vote, I'll just ask your question, Bill.
Yeah, we'll do that during the regular board meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Questions now, anybody else on the board? Bill, do we have any questions from the public?
Let me check. I have none, either on livestream or an email.
Okay. Anything else? All right, then I will go ahead, hearing nothing else, and close the public hearing at five thirty-seven P M. And now we are back in the regular select board meeting. And the first item on the agenda is the town manager's report.
Thanks. I've been receiving a comment that the livestream audio may be a little bit quiet tonight, so we are working on that for anybody that's listening, so we are working on that. So to provide an update in the manager's report, most of it is written, as you all know, the EMS class, and I will try to see if I can share the report so those at home can see this. Oops, that's the wrong one. There we go. So the EMS class that Rockport firefighters, as well as police officers, have attended over the past several months, all of them have passed the written final test a week ago, when this was written, and all five also passed the hands-on practical. The next step is the state practical exam, which is on hold currently because of the pandemic. After they, at the state, once the state tells us that they can take the test, then the next step after that, it will be the national written test in order for them to receive their EMS license. So it's good news that they've passed everything locally, and now they're just waiting. Short-term rentals, as you know, during the pandemic, there are a lot of different projects that were put on hold, and short-term rental project was one of those. We had started some research, staff had started some research, some of the McEd folks had started research as well, and that was put on hold. We're picking that back up, basically with the assistance of the intern Olivia LaRoche. She's gonna work with Hannah Sisk, who works for McEd, and Bill Napeower, our planner, who also works for McEd. We're gonna update the original timeline to see if we're, if we can still meet the goal that the board had set of something for the November ballot. So I should have more information for you at your next meeting.
And just for the board, so that I can tell the board, one of the things that you and I have discussed, and also Denise, during our agenda planning meeting, was that, you know, it's possible that we can have a workshop on this if we have to via remote, and we talked about ways that we can do that. So that's one of the things that Bill's gonna be looking at, which would be needed in order to keep us on the November timeline, if that's possible.
Yeah, and as most of you probably know, the planning board is having a public hearing this week too, in live, as well as over Zoom with invite only. So I think we definitely can do a public or a workshop on this, and those people that are comfortable being, you know, say upstairs in the auditorium at the Opera House spaced apart, and then through Zoom, we could allow that as well. So I think we definitely can do that, it's just a matter of looking at that timeline and seeing where we can fit those things in. We did receive two payments in lieu of taxes, which is always beneficial for us. So the Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation provided four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars, and the Vesper Hill Foundation, which essentially runs the children's chapel, sent one in in the amount of five hundred dollars. Also, another project put on hold by the pandemic was the, our EMS education analysis that we had, we're waiting for a proposal to come in from Tom Judge of Lifeflight Maine and another consultant that would develop an unbiased education program to educate the public on what EMS is, what the actual different levels of licensing are, and to also review the different models of providing EMS for residents. Obviously, this was put on hold because we can't have any gatherings more than fifty at this point. It was more than ten, obviously, before. I'm still waiting to have a final proposal from them, and hopefully that'll be in, hopefully a chair meeting in, on June, I think, twenty-second, if not the first one in July. But it has just been slowed down, obviously. As you know, the library reopened. I included all the information, the reopening plan, in my report because I thought it was beneficial for the public to see that again. I won't, I won't go through all the details here, but we obviously have limits on the number of patrons in the library, which is five, the time limit when they can be in the library, the fact that patrons need to wear masks as well. We ask people not to touch all the books that they wanna look at, hopefully just grab one and take it with them, limiting use on public, the public computers. Entrance and exits are one-way. Not taking any donations of books or magazines. Obviously, cleaning is continued, and the hours have been reduced to ten to five, Monday through Friday. And this gives the staff extra time to process the curbside pickup orders, which are still, still happening if people want to do that, and also to clean the building. The Midcoast Recreation Center had approached me a couple of weeks ago about using the tennis courts at the Marge Jones Fields for their summer youth tennis camps, so that they could still offer these camps, but have it in a socially-distanced and easier manner. After working with the director, Craig Wilson, at M R C, I approved the use of that, and basically they're held Monday through Thursdays in the mornings, essentially from nine to noon. I think there's one or two days that go until one. And in allowing them to do that, M R C is offering two spots per week in the camps free of charge to Rockport residents. So I think it's a good use of the site, as well as obviously good for M R C to continue to do that. Denise?
Bill, I was just curious how that, how you choose the people that get the free-of-charge slot? How is that?
M R C does that, and I think it's essentially on a first-come, first-served basis. They also have provided signs up at the tennis courts, just to let people know that they're reserved for those certain times, so that people are aware. Keeping in mind that Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, they're not reserved at all, so, you know, they're open for the residents to use the rest of the time also. R E S site, I've been approached by different groups that want to use the site for various activities, mostly exercise classes, and the Public Works Administrative Assistant, Brandy Hare, is the one that handles those reservations at the site, as well as the other areas in town. But she and I basically work in tandem when we look at those types of things. And they are, it seems to be working pretty well. I also wanted to note that the Glen Cove Rest Area has been, Public Works crew spent, there's probably two or three of the members of the crew that spent three days at the site, trimming brush and trees, as well as picking up brush that was left by M D O T after they did their trimming last fall. If you haven't looked at it, they've done, definitely done a nice job, and the view is back. Obviously, they only cut what they could cut within the shoreline zoning requirement, but they've done a nice job of that. Couple of other things that I'll add that aren't in the written report. I'm pleased to say that the fire department received a fifteen thousand dollar grant from the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation. That's for the purchase of battery-operated extrication equipment, including one cutter and one separator, four batteries, and a charging station. The Rockport Volunteer Firefighters Nonprofit is providing fifteen hundred dollars with the grant to finalize the purchase of that equipment. So that's, that's a, that's a good news that we came, that came in. And the police union has finalized their change from the Teamsters Local Union, number three forty, to the Fraternal Order of Police, so that'll be effective July first. Hopefully, we'll be able to begin negotiations with the new union shortly. One other topic I wanted to say, and you've probably noticed this around town also, Public Works has been working on painting the lines throughout the town, the crosswalks, the stop lines, that type of thing. I'm sure you've probably noticed those as you've driven around town. Any, any questions from anybody?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say that I have noticed that Glen Cove Rest Area does look really nice, and I know at one point we were wondering how much it's used, but I've been noticing, because I've been going back and forth there every day, that it's really used pretty frequently, every day I see it being used.
Yes.
Denise?
First of all, I think the street painting looks really nice. It was really a nice sort of perk up for the town to see the lines get painted. How, is it possible to get some Public Works folks to come over? Can we get that kind of dedicated time for Harbor Park as well? Because it could certainly use some cleanup. How does that, how does that work?
For paint striping, or?
No, now I've switched gears back to the Glen Cove work that they did to clean up the kayak area back. You know, there's just a lot of cleanup that needs to be done at Harbor Park as well.
Yeah, that, that will get done, it is on the list.
Great. Doug?
Bill, do you have any thoughts about the Comprehensive Plan Committee or the R E S redevelopment committee when they might sort of get back in action?
Well, I think the R E S redevelopment committee is a little bit easier, probably, than the Comprehensive Plan Committee, only from the size of the committees. I think R E S could probably begin, probably anytime. I think we probably could get a meeting together of that committee, you know, in fairly short order, maybe the end of this month or beginning of July. Comprehensive Plan Committee, it's a little bit more of a, it's a bigger group, so we'd have to meet probably upstairs in the Opera House, in the auditorium. It can be done, so I'll have to look into that to see about logistics for that.
Yeah, Doug, I'm glad you brought that up, because I've gotten, I've gotten contacted by a couple of people on the Comprehensive Plan Committee who are anxious to get it going, and of course, we are anxious to do that. I know Dominic, who is usually in New York, and was, you know, made a commitment to make it up for most of the meetings, he's, he's living up here because of the quarantine, so he's one of the people who are to contact me. I think we should get that going.
Yeah, I can touch base with Bill Napeower on Wednesday. It's his day in the office, so I'll touch base with him then and see what we can do. You know, we can always do it over Zoom for a little while longer as well.
Sure.
So that may be easier, of course, in the interim.
In the short run, yeah. Anybody else have questions on the board? I have to go back and forth between my little film strip of people here to see if anybody's got their hand up, but I don't see any comments. Okay, so that's it on the, on the manager's report. The next item on the agenda is public input on non-agenda items. Obviously, it's what, it's any public input that we've received via an email to Bill or through the livestream on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Have you received anything, Bill?
Let me check. No, I have not received anything.
Okay, all right, then we move on to amendments to the, to the agenda. Does anybody have any suggested amendments? Obviously, we wanna get to our guests as soon as possible, but they're pretty much right after this, so. Okay, none, none seen. So, okay, the next item is the consent agenda, which there isn't one, which takes us right into action items. So the first action item is to act on the application for Planning Board alternate for Mark Haley. And Mark has submitted an application, a nice detailed application, which we appreciate, and he's with us tonight. And Mark, would you like to add any comments?
Sure, just briefly, I relocated to Rockport, bought a house in the middle of April. I will be a permanent resident here. I'm just looking forward to becoming active in the community and giving back to my newly adopted town. I have experience in a lot of real estate investment, so I'm familiar with kind of how the construction projects fit in with the feeling of the town and kind of the historic aspects of the town, as well as the future looking, what the future may look like for the town, and how developers and people who want to make changes to their dwellings or businesses or properties, how they need to coexist with the butters and with the town's overall, the overall feel of the town. So I look forward to hopefully joining on as an alternate.
You have a lot of great background for that position. Are there any questions from any, Doug I see?
Yes, Mark, thank you for your application. Can you share with us a little bit where your previous years of experience were with, you know, investments, development, things like that, what part of the country?
Sure thing. I was, when I was primarily doing real estate investments, I was located in New York City. However, I worked on several projects outside of, pretty much in the mid-Atlantic and New England regions. For, I guess, comparable locations to, to the mid-coast main would be out in Wayne, New Jersey. I helped, we invested in a self-storage development, which we were successful in all the land use permitting, et cetera, with the town of Wayne, New Jersey. And, you know, self-storage facilities are, this is going back probably about ten years, but they seem to be popping up everywhere, and the town was very, very nervous about our application. We had a joint venture partner on that who had opened up several locations in the past, and I think we were able to assuage some of the concerns due to, it didn't look like a traditional self-storage facility. We made it look more akin to, it was three levels, but made it look more akin to, maybe, almost an office building. So it'd fit in with the character of the route that it was on. So, you know, a lot of the projects that I did work on in the real estate universe were, you know, actively involved with the community that we, that we worked on projects with, residential apartment buildings, be it workable buildings or office buildings. So, you know, you're always gonna have, you have two sides to kind of the planning of real estate projects, in my view, and, you know, ultimately, you have the landowners, the community of the town, and then you have the developers. You know, sometimes they're coming in from, it could be from anywhere. So our philosophy always, as developers, were really to take a litmus test of the town, and specifically how our project would fit in with the heritage of the town and the location itself. You know, obviously, there were certain times when the citizens had, you know, objections to the size of our buildings or the height, and, you know, there are compromises that can be made from developers to make sure it's a successful product and it meets the needs of the town. I think some of the benefits to the town can be increase in tax base and, you know, providing jobs for the community. So my, the development projects I worked on would definitely, you know, fit in very well with, with the communities that we built buildings in. Aside from, you know, the ones that we did in cities were kind of a whole different animal. But for all of the suburban projects I worked on, we, you know, we worked, we worked hand-in-hand with the town boards.
Thank you. If I could, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would move the board to point Mark X Haley the second to the Planning Board as an alternative member for a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll call the question. Doug?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, thank you, Mark, we appreciate your willingness to, to serve.
Thank you. Of course.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Act on the Liquor License Application for Ports of Italy. And we heard from the owner and manager in the public hearing. Is there any, any further discussion by the board? Or does someone want to make a motion?
I move the board approve the liquor license application for C I C C one three. I think you said C C. C C three, but is it?
No, no, I think you, I think you said C C, you forgot the I between the Cs, I think.
C I C C, C I C C one three.
Correct.
It's written as a one, as an I, but, okay. Good.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Mark seconds it, okay, any discussion?
It has been a practice in the past, and I'm not, I don't recall other licenses that have come to us. But this one, I had an opportunity to talk to Randy. I would like to see accompanying, at least the new ones, if not even the renewals, something either in writing or verbally from the chief attending the meeting indicating it's okay or not.
From the police chief?
Right.
Yeah, we have had that in the past, Bill, has that not been your practice, or aren't aware of it?
For new ones, it's kind of difficult, because there is no history for that restaurant. But for renewals, that would be a normal practice, that the police chief would review any incidents that may have happened at that establishment over the previous year. But for new ones, you know, there is, there is no history of the, and obviously in the community.
Okay.
I'd like to see going forward, the police chief be able to have an opportunity to weigh in, whether it's new or-
Okay.
I'd like to see going forward, the police chief be able to have an opportunity to weigh in, whether it's new or renewal.
He has weighed in verbally to me and he is fine with the application, but I didn't have him put anything in writing.
Anything else for the board? Well, I take it we don't have anything for the public?
Let me check. No.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, no further discussion from the board, so call the question. Doug?
I'll drink to that motion.
Denise?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We look forward to the restaurant opening, Mr. Clondry and Mr. Teal. Okay, thank you. Alright. The next item is the to act on peddler's permit at Harbor Park. And Mr. Sanders, Mark Sanders is with us from Camden Bagel. Bill, you want to introduce this?
Of course, so in your packet, you have the peddler's permit application, but also have a description from. Mr. Sanders that describes basically what they're looking to do with the food trailer. May have changed a little bit from when it was first submitted, probably a month ago, a month ago or so. But I certainly will, this, this obviously would be similar to having the food truck a few years ago that was down at the, at the Harbor Park. And all he needs is electricity, so I think with that, I would just turn it over to Mr. Sanders if he'd like to comment.
Hello, everybody, not much to comment, just want to know. Want you all to know that it is kind of very variable market right now and just trying to figure out what actual, actual food and menus I'm going to do there. I'm just kind of seeing, you know, if other places don't open right in Rockport Village, I might start doing some breakfast lunch as well, so. Kind of keeping my options open.
Great, great, makes sense.
I'm very, I, I love Rockport and the harbor especially, and I think it's just a great spot now that we don't. Dining rooms aren't that important and everyone wants to be outside, it could be just a very, a great place to get some food and still socially distanced and be safe.
Yeah, it's great, I think, I think it's a great addition. Any other comments?
I have a question, I think, didn't we in years past develop a pad? For the previous vendor that was down near Andre, and I'm curious. Whether the intention is to put it halfway up the, the travel lane. Or back where we had designated the pad for previous vendors.
Yeah, we, we moved the power strip, Mark, so that it would be easily accessible to the. Food truck being right off the circle as the last one was.
Will it be up next to the asphalt or back a ways?
Well, it would be right up next to the asphalt, right up, right up over that curb in the circle, under the tree.
No, I mean, for, for the, the positioning of the, the trailer for selling.
That's where the last one was.
Yep.
The plan is to put it where the last one was, I am working with Public Works to, to look for. A different location where we can put a permanent paved pad, and that would, that would mean either having a second. Power pedestal or moving the current one, but.
Well, yeah, the reason I ask, it didn't, it doesn't indicate that on the drawing, it, it gives the appearance of being halfway down. The, that strip before you get to the loop.
Right.
That's, that's why I asked the question, that's all.
Yeah, I think it's more of a general, a general look.
Right, it was to my understanding that that might be where the future pad was. And that we would be setting up right next to that power strip, just like you said, for now, then eventually that designated pad. Would be wherever I or the next person would go.
Yeah, there's, there's no power over there currently.
Right.
And my only, my only concern, even with it being there in the future, is with people backing in and out of spaces and people traveling down. Towards the loop, if you have people standing in the road, waiting to order, it might be a problem more than it would be down below.
Yeah, we're, we're, like I said, I'm working with Public Works and also. The engineer to look at the whole Harvard Park because we need to, we need to adjust the parking lot there anyway. It doesn't make sense how it's laid out, so we do have a couple of plans that were developed previously that we're going from. So, and it's part of that would be to have a new location for the, the food trailer or food truck. And that would include moving that power pedestal, but it would also include having a, either gravel pad or a paved pad with enough space between. The food vendor and the traveled way so that they wouldn't be standing out in the, in the, on the road.
Jeff?
Yeah, if I could, I'd move the board approve the use of Harbor Park by Mark Sanders for food trailer for twenty twenty. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, call the question, Denise?
Oh, Doug, wait, Doug had a question.
Oh, sorry, I can't see Doug on my little thing here, sorry Doug, go ahead.
Hi, Mark, nice to see you again, and this is a great idea. One question, though, how critical to your marketing strategy is that? Eight-foot-tall flag that you're going to have.
No, that's not critical at all, I've already discussed a little bit of options, I just need some signage or just something up there saying I'm open. And that's something I'm happy to discuss with you now, it could, doesn't have to be a flag, it could just be like a sandwich board that I put up and say. Hot food avail, hot food available at the harbor. I know it was not wanted to be like a sign for my establishment, but just more for. Information, like hot food or food or, you know, whatever we could decide on.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, this is permitted by our regulations and everything, but occasionally I'll get a comment. From people around town with too many of these flags fluttering around. So, I appreciate you at least thinking about it, thank you.
Okay, I think I see everybody here, any other questions, comments? Okay, call the question, Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Alright, thank you, we look forward to having, having the trailer there.
Yeah, it's gonna be great to have food in there again.
Thank you, and so now I will just pay my fee at the town, at the town office?
Yes.
Okay.
You can pick up your permit after, after everything's all signed off.
Okay, great, well, thank you so much, guys, take care and have a good night.
Good luck.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the education and development reimbursement policy as. Phil has noted here, we had previously allocated money for this in the budget. And he has, he has developed a policy that hopefully is, everybody's had a chance to look at. So, do you want to add anything, Bill?
Yeah, I'll just say that, obviously, it's a reimbursement policy, we, there is language in, in the policy that talks about. Employees letting us know by December thirty-first of any given year, so that we can plan accordingly within the budget, so they'll let their department head know. And then, once they've taken the class, excuse me, then they would apply for reimbursement, and I did. Build in some incentive for them to do well in the class or the certificate program. So that the higher grade that they get, the more reimbursement, they, they do get up to a thousand dollars per course. Starting at five hundred for C and seven fifty for B and a thousand for an A. And there's also language built in so that should they leave employment within three years after receiving this reimbursement, that. Percentage of it is paid back to the town, because again, the idea is that we're investing in them and we'd like them to stick around and. So that we can reap the rewards of their further educa, education.
Yeah, I thought the policy was really nicely written and really well thought out.
Does that, does that mer?
Sorry, Doug had his hand, hand up next.
I, I'm not a policy wonk like ours themed attorneys are on the board. I found bits of it kind of confusing. You know, you have the program of study where it talks about. The different courses and programs and if you have to get a C or better, and then you go to the conditions of reimbursement and. Section five talks about having to get a letter grade of C or better again, and then finally. The last page, well, reimbursement amounts and it, it's graded. So, this came up three different times and again, I found it a little confusing. Another thing, under section two of condition of reimbursement. An employee, employee leaving before the one-year period. Has to pay back the reimbursement during the preceding one-year period. Is an automatic deduction, but then later it talks about if the people leave. They, within a first year, it's a hundred percent, two years seventy-five, three years at fifty percent. Again, I personally found it a little confusing, but again, I'm not a policy wonk and. If everybody else is happy with it, so be it.
Hey, Mark, you had a comment?
Yeah, Bill, I know there was language in the previous contracts, at least for the police department, that indicated. A payment for college courses that had been completed on a yearly basis. Does this policy mirror what may or may not be in the upcoming contract?
There is, there is nothing in the Public Works contract, in the police department contract, we, obviously, we haven't started negotiations yet, but. It would, it's very, the language in the police department contract is very. Small compared to, compared to this.
No, no, I, well, no, I'm, I'm okay with your verbiage, I'm just saying. I believe the previous amounts in the police department's contract were less. Than what you're offering now, I think, but I, I don't have the contract in front of me, so. I just want to make sure that we're going to be offering. Potentially.
Yeah, they would be, if, if they were, if they were less, we certainly would make them so that they're the same.
Okay, good, yep.
Doug?
One other question, Bill, under eligibility. It says the employee must submit the request at the department head. And then if approved by the department head, an employee will sign it and then submit it to the town manager's office. Does this, did here anywhere say, I'm assuming you have the final. Final, final say in whether or not it gets approved?
Yeah, I think that goes without saying, but there, there's a couple of different steps there, Doug, so the first step is for the employee. To notify the department head that there, they have, there's an intent for them to take a class. That would qualify for this reimbursement, and the reason for that, as I said before, was so that we could plan in the budget, an appropriate number. I know when the, when the previous, this, the current budget that we're in now, there, there was just a number put in of five thousand dollars. Because you don't, you got to start someplace, this would allow us to be able to plan for that. At the same time, there is language under the reimbursement. On the conditions of reimbursement, paragraph four, the last sentence. Talks about approval by the town manager, so.
Alright.
Yeah, number four, on page four, talks about town manager approval. Uh, let's see here. I don't think, Mark, do you have your hand up?
I did, I, it was up, I put it down, put it up again, but just a quick question, Bill, have you? Done any sort of internal survey within your town office now? Or any staffing that might qualify for this payment to determine whether you'll have enough?
I haven't done any informal survey, but I just know that there are some employees that this will, that will qualify for this. And I think that we'll have enough.
I was just thinking, I mean, if, if five people out of, however many there are get As, then we've chewed up five grand. Which is, you know, it's just good to know, yeah.
Yeah, and that's why there's language in it that says, you know, it's first come, first served basis, it's going to have to be handled a little bit differently. In the, in the current year, if there's anybody that would qualify in the next month or so, but. But yeah, and we'll have to, we'll have to, that's, that's the language that we put in there about the, the education intent form. So that when they.
Yeah, okay.
When they fill that out, so that when we're putting the budget together for the next year, then we'll have a good idea as to what the number should be.
And so, I may have missed it, but. One person is entitled one payment. Not one person having three classes. That might get three payments.
It all, it all depends on how many there are.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, if one person come in and they had five classes, and they were the first person to come in and give you their paperwork. And they all had As in those five classes, then everybody else is S O L.
Well, again, they have to do the education intent policy first.
I, you know, I get it, I'm just, anyway, good, yep. Thank you.
Um, yeah, Jeff?
Yeah, if I could, just to move it forward, I move the board approve the education and development reimbursement policy. With the effective date of today, June eighth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, call the question, Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Mark, just as an aside, before we move on, I think because you're using an iPad.
Yeah.
Your picture is vertical, so if you want to say something, you gotta unfortunately, like, put your hand in front of your face or something, you know, you gotta. You gotta move your hand inside toward, toward your body. Okay?
I put, I put the hand up on the little bar there and it raised my hand, but. I'll, I'll do this.
Yeah, 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 just go, hey, Deborah, yeah, I, I don't want to miss you, so, okay. Alright. The next item on the agenda is act on nomination for main municipal association legislative policy committee representative. That's a mouthful, so as Bill has noted here, every two years. We nominate legislative policy committee representatives, and he has served on this. For, he currently serves on it and. He, of course, we can, you know, we can, a board member can serve or whatever, but. He is willing to serve on that, again, going forward, so if we want to nominate him?
I move the board nominate William Post and not me for the main municipal legislative policy committee for Senate District twelve.
Second.
Okay, I think Mark seconded it first, okay, any discussion? Alright, so, call the question, Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. You're it, Bill.
Thank you, well, I still have to get elected.
I know, I know, but so far, so good. Alright, so the next, the next item on the agenda is the act on award of paving bids. So, Bill, you want to handle this?
Sure, so, last week, we opened five bids for paving projects. And the apparent low bidder is Allstate Asphalt Inc. with a per ton cost of seventy-one forty-five per ton. For twelve and a half mix and seventy-two forty-five per ton for nine and a half mix, and there's a typo in my paragraph there. You do have in your materials, the, the bid tally, the next lowest bidder, I believe, was five dollars more, I believe, there were. There were four other bids were very, very close, ranging from seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents to seventy-nine dollars. Which is very interesting. I've, I have not personally ever worked with Allstate Asphalt, but I have. I know several town managers and. uh, I know several town managers and public works directors that have used them. And they're, have nothing but good reports to say about them. I've, um, talked at great length with some of their employees at different trade shows and conferences. Uh, one of their, um, employees used to, used to work for the main local road center for the main department of transportation. So he certainly knows his asphalt. Uh, so I don't have any hesitation in nominating, recommending it to be awarded to Allstate for the prices as submitted.
Uh, Doug?
Uh, couple questions, Bill. One, uh, where is Allstate out of? And then, my second question, uh, I'm really, I'm sorry, I couldn't really understand the chart here. It's obviously different prices or different, uh, parts, but is there like a sum total somewhere that I should be looking at?
Well, the reason, the reason that you see, I only talk about the big number of the per-ton cost for the asphalt. There are several other items that we bid for, or put out for bid, which is TAC, which is the liquid that goes down on top of existing asphalt to bind the new asphalt to. There's milling, which is basically grinding the pavement so that you match up old and new, or, or new and not so new, um, or to, um, uh, another road, for instance. Um, reclaim is essentially grinding the existing pavement down and, and milling it back into the road. And then hand place per ton. Um, those are the costs associated with placing pavement in areas where you can't have a machine place the pavement, such as, you know, around catch basins and, and things like that. The reason that the suggested motion is to accept the prices for paving as submitted is because we included, um, one, two, three, four, five, this is for five roads. Uh, but there's language in the RFP that allows us to add roads to their project list, and they'll do that basically at the same prices. So that's why you don't see a, a set price for project, for, for example. I can, I can tell you that the amount of, uh, tonnage for the projects that we have listed, uh, which include Park Street, South Street, Beach Hill, Gurnee Street and Mill Street is about nine thousand tons of pavement. And so I'll, and, and again, we can probably add to that, um, depending on if we're, if we're ready on other roads. And these are all part of the bond, the infrastructure bond package as well.
So just let me interrupt for a second. So what you're saying is it's really the asphalt cost per ton that is the, you know, maybe ninety percent of what the cost is. So whoever has that lowest number, the other numbers are sort of irrelevant?
Yes, basically. I mean, to put it in a nutshell, and, and the other numbers, if you look at them, Allstate is, is less expensive or the same for the TAC per square yard, the milling per square yard, uh, the reclaim, and they're a little bit higher when it comes to the hand place per ton for pavement. But again, there's very little of hand placed pavement. So overall, if you, if you just looked at their bid with the next, uh, with the next lowest, with the amount of tons that we're looking at putting down, there's about a forty-five thousand dollar difference. So they're, they're forty-five thousand dollars less for the, uh, for the main asphalt than the next lowest bidder. So certainly, the other numbers, uh, the only number that would be higher is the hand place per ton, and they're not gonna get anywhere close to making up the difference there.
Okay, and where are they located out of?
Sorry, they have a, uh, their main base is in Richmond. Um, and their company headquarters are in Massachusetts. But they have a plant in Richmond, uh, that they actually just built, I think, two years ago, maybe. Um, and Richmond is the next town over from Bodenham, so that's one of the reasons I know them very well. But again, haven't had them, uh, do any projects for me. I don't have any history with them.
Thank you.
Uh, Mark? That was very good, Mark.
Well, I looked up and I, I saw Bill talking and I said, well, I don't know whether she'll see me or not, but anyway. You know, I, forever the optimist. I mean, I know, and I was there the day they were opened, I, um, I don't know how many bids we've received in the past, but to see five of them and have them be that close, uh, I was fairly impressed. And, um, I mean, I already grilled Bill a little bit about the, the number that was budgeted as a guesstimate versus what we have. And, and there's a difference, but there's also, um, engineering and things that weren't included in some of the projects that will chew up that uh, potential savings, but I'm still of the mindset that maybe when it, when the dust settles, we'll be able to make up some of that hundred thousand that we, we've cut. And I don't wanna commit anything, I'm just saying that I'm optimistic, so I'm appreciative of everything, Bill. Thank you.
Well, and I will answer that too, Mark. I did, I did some more, um, analysis on the items that are in the bond and what the estimated costs were originally for those, uh, projects, which I wasn't a part of. I just copied the numbers that were there when I got here.
Yeah.
But with those roads, we're looking at, um, with the, with the bid cost on the roads that are included in the bid, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars less for cost. Um, actually, what I fact, factored out is about a hundred and, about a hundred and four thousand dollars less. But, but, as you said, and I said this with you last week, is that there's engineering costs that weren't built into those estimates originally, and we know we're gonna spend forty thousand dollars on engineering costs. And one of the projects, uh, the old, old Rockland Road, was, was severely, the estimate, I think, is severely low. So I, I think it's gonna get, it, it looks like it might get eaten up. But we'll have to see, 'cause that, that project hopefully will be going out to bid in another month or so. Um, and that one's gonna be completely rebuilt, uh, and done by a contractor, so we'll see what that looks like. So we'll know more, um, you know, in another probably eight weeks.
No, that, that's great. I, I mean, I'm, I see the glimmer of light out there, so just, uh, thank you.
Yeah, no, I agree. I, I do too. I was pleased, when I saw those, the, the bids come in, in the seventy-dollar range, I was pleased.
Do you need a motion, or did we do that already?
Uh, we need a motion.
I move the board accept Allstate Asphalt Inc.'s prices for paving as submitted.
Second?
Okay, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, uh, Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. The next item on the agenda is, um, we're moving into discussion items, so, um, the first item is to discuss the parking work plan. And I know that we've discussed this a little bit before, but we've asked, um, we asked Bill to, uh, Denise and I asked Bill to, um, to go over, uh, where, where that group stands and just, this whole, um, issue for us again, update us. Bill?
Yep, so, um, again, this was one of these things that was preempted by the pandemic, unfortunately. But we do plan on having, picking this back up again and having the work group, uh, begin meeting in, in June. I'll be talking again with Bill Napeower on Wednesday about getting this up and running. And so, I've included in your material the, uh, parking plan purpose and goal statement that was developed by the work group. Um, and there's a timeline also that kinda goes along with that. So, um, the goals are, are on the screen there, basically to maximize parking in the town of Rockport right-of-way. Uh, manage availability of public parking by setting time limitations, increase accessibility of public parking, uh, increase the use of parking by improving signage and striping to create a safe environment for pedestrians, improve traffic flow, and identify areas for additional off-street public parking. And then you see the breakdown below, the short term, three to eight months. And then there's medium term, which is nine to eighteen months. And then there's long term, which is eighteen months plus. Again, you know, we, we stopped meeting during the pandemic, uh, for obvious reasons, and we will pick this up again in June. And I, and I will say that, um, Denise, I don't know if you were gonna mention this or not, but we had a resident contact, uh, Denise and I, earlier this afternoon, basically offering to pay for a traffic engineer to come down and talk to us about what he would be able to provide for a professional, um, traffic parking study. So it, it came in late this afternoon, so I really don't, haven't had any time to, to vet that offer at all and to see what it actually entails, but I certainly will provide some more information on that, most likely at your, at your next meeting.
So this is a suggestion that the resident actually pay for the study?
Not for the study, I think it's just to have the, the meet and greet.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Understand what, what they could do for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, I, I'll read what he says. "The, the traffic engineer is willing to visit Rockport and discuss our needs with any and all interested parties." Um, and, and the emailer said he's willing to compensate him for his time during the visit, so there would be no financial risk to the town. And I think that's certainly something that the, the parking group would make sense to meet with, um, with this individual. But I can, I can further, um, we'll, we'll further look into this, as again, it came in just before four o'clock this afternoon, so.
Doug?
Uh, yeah, actually, I'm glad that we had an opportunity to review this here tonight as the select board, because as many of you probably know, on Thursday evening, there's a public hearing for the planning board. And there's actually several, uh, items, uh, that are open for discussion that are relevant to parking, uh, ranging from a recommendation that the select board made several months ago regarding, um, uh, eliminating the off-street parking requirements for downtown. But then there's also a citizen's position, uh, petition asking for a, uh, independent parking study. But I think it's good, just as a reminder for the select board and perhaps for people watching this evening also, uh, to know that we do have a plan that we're moving ahead on. And, uh, we're generating some ideas already. I have a question for Bill, two questions. Um, I'm on this committee, Bill, but do you have a sense of what our schedule might be going forward? Uh, you know, can we come to a conclusion or two in the several months? And then finally, what is our final product gonna be out of that committee? Is it gonna be recommendations to the select board, or what's your vision for that?
Yeah, so, um, I'll answer your questions in reverse order, I guess. So my thought is that obviously this committee will provide recommendations to the select board, um, when it comes to certain, certain items, um, whether it's, you know, looking at potential one-way, uh, making some streets one-way so we can allow for parking spaces. Um, and you see under the short term, you know, we're looking at possibly Summer Street or Church Street or Mechanic in winter. Uh, but we, we, we would have to have some, um, public meetings or workshops with residents also to get some feedback on those. Uh, whether that's at the select board level, which probably makes sense to do, or at a, you know, a committee level. So those things, I think, would be, would be select board level, obviously, when it comes to anything like that. Other things that are, you know, either marking non-parking areas or potentially putting up signs, things like that, would be more at, at my level with Public Works, uh, based on, uh, what the committee would recommend. Those wouldn't have to have any involvement by the select board necessarily. Um, as for timeframe, you know, we had, we had started meeting, if I recall correctly, we had talked about meeting before the pandemic every, every two or three weeks, trying to speed up the meetings so that, um, you know, we could have some, um, have a good discussion and have some decisions and recommendations coming forward. So I think that that's, that would be my goal anyway, is to try to meet every, every two or three weeks. Thank you.
Uh, Mark?
You know, I've never been a, a proponent of having striping downtown. And I will just say that you will have noticed that the state has gone through and put the white lines along the edges. And what they have, uh, marked out is what a proper width traveling should be. So what you're noticing is you don't have much room on the outer edges. So anything that we do on any of the streets, we should also consider taking some property that might be within the road right-of-way to make those places beyond those white lines uh, more parking friendly. Because I don't, you know, that's why I didn't do the white line thing in the parking spaces, is because the roads really aren't wide enough to have a proper traveling and parking. So that's all I got. It's not a very good story, but there it is.
And that certainly is something that the committee has talked about, is to look at the right-of-way based on traffic flow and road width.
Doug made ca- uh, mention of the, uh, of the action that the select board had taken, uh, to, um, to eliminate the off-street parking, uh, requirements for downtown district. And, um, the only thing I wanted to add to that was, um, just to remind everyone, or everyone watching, that the ORC had recommended that uh, unanimously some years ago, and it just never got acted on as well.
You know, if, if I could, just to add that one little, I mean, I, I think the more parking we can get, the better. I mean, and I don't know whether that stretch from, from the bridge up, up through, um, the village towards Union Street, is that part of what might be considered one-way? It certainly would alleviate some of the, um, constraints by road widths.
You mean one way through the village?
Yeah, from the bridge, from the bridge up through, you know, up past.
We hadn't talked about that, Mark, but actually, uh, we definitely ought to at least put it on our.
Yeah, you know,
It's an interesting concept.
Uh, you know, it's just, I'm just throwing it out there because we, we really don't have a lot of road to work with. And if it were one-way, then you certainly would have, you know, a lot of parking on, safely on both sides, coming up through.
And then you would just circle around on, um, what is it, on Summer Street?
Yeah.
It would add more, obviously add more traffic to Summer Street.
The, the only downside is there, again, is a state aid road, so
Right.
we, we'd sorta have to get their blessing as well.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I was gonna bring up, Mark, is that any, anything to do with that road, we would have to have MDOT involved with.
But it's an interesting concept, and as long as you're, you know, looking at all options, you know, why not look at all options, you know, including that?
Well, it's similar to what Rockland has, I suppose.
Yeah, uh, uh, good point. Doug?
Uh, just to follow up on what Mark said about the right-of-way, um, I tend to agree with Mark and be a little bit militaristic about this right-of-way business, because I understand that there may be individual property owners who feel that the town by, uh, using what is rightfully the town's right-of-way, they may be offended and feel that we're approaching on their property. But I think those numbers are quite small when you compare that to the number of people who are complaining uh, about the parking in downtown. So again, I think that, uh, it's sort of like the greatest good for the greatest number. Uh, and again, I, I think that should be looked at very strongly, and if the town has property that we own, uh, that could be used, uh, to make, uh, better parking, I think we may very well have to have that discussion, although I understand it may be unpopular with individual property owners.
And as long, eh, 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 go ahead, Denise.
It's all right, Deborah, I've already said something, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say that, um, uh, I'm not sure if it's expressly stated on this, but you know, certainly there are some areas that some of us have ha- ha- have talked about, uh, you know, individually with Bill or whatever, that might be. ha- ha- have talked about, you know, individually with Bill or whatever that might be potential areas too for there to be a public-private partnership or whatever for the town to purchase or, you know, we certainly can't talk about those here, but that's certainly something that's, you know, in our, in our, on our radar screen to, to use a overused term. Okay, Denise?
Um, and as Mark pointed out with these, the new striping done, you know, you see cars parked and they're clearly well into the traffic lane. I mean, it really highlights that there just isn't enough parking on the side, you know, the width of what's left if what they've striped out is, is what is necessary for a driving lane. There's not enough left for cars to safely park on the side.
But all this said, there are, I guess the point here is that there are actively, we're actively considering various options. There are a number of options. I'm just going to go ahead and, and, and say, you know, I, I know that the planning board will be, you know, addressing these various things and I'm hopeful that, that, that the voters will will go the direction that the select board and ORC have recommended, but we'll see what happens. All right, anybody else? Okay, it's just discussion, so we'll move on. The next item is discuss West Rockport Fire Station design process. So Bill?
Yeah, so in your packet, in, in my comments, I noted that the architects are picking this project up. And they've asked us basically to identify stakeholders that they can work with to begin the design process for the new fire station. Um, I asked obviously Chief Beasley to weigh in on this and he identified several firefighters, including some leadership positions that you see. And I'd also ask him to reach out or, or look for some area residents in the rest, West Rockport area that may be interested in this project as well. And he identified the two residents that you see, Chris Cangis and Tom Cox. That would be willing and able to serve as stakeholders and potentially on the building committee. And I think obviously we need to have at least a, a board member either as a liaison or, or serving on the building committee as well. So I wanted to bring this up for discussion to see what your thoughts were.
I think that we should do that. I think that, I'm hoping that we can identify someone who's going to be willing to do that because you're going to be having meetings any, soon, right?
Yeah, we need to start meeting in, in June. The first step will be, there's a list of questions that the architect has put together that, you know, that the, the stakeholders would, would answer, you know, what do you, what do you see for the new building? What space needs are there, that type of thing? But yeah, we would like to get a meeting probably, you know, be in this, this month certainly.
And I know that the liaisons, we're not going to, you know, reappoint until after the election. But we need to have a liaison, if the board so chooses, now without waiting until then.
I think it looks like a good group of people. That'll make ten or eleven people, which is a little bit large for a committee, but not everybody can make every meeting, so it all seems pretty reasonable to me.
I mean, I, I wouldn't mind doing it in the short term, not knowing whether I'd be here in the long term, if that's, if that would, I don't know whether anybody else has a great interest, but.
I would be interested except a couple of things. One, I also may be a short-termer, but also coming off the library project, I'm sort of burned out on building committees at this time.
I mean, if somebody else wants to take it in the short term and, you know, Doug and I are there afterwards if we, I guess we call ourselves fortunate. One of us might do it if somebody wanted to do it in the short term.
I, I don't have any burning desire to do it, so unless Denise or Jeff do, then Jeff?
Uh, with my involvement engagement on the comp plan committee, about ready to head into high gear here for the next year, probably would not be the best thing for me to do.
So Mark, it would seem that you're a good candidate.
Yeah, I, and again, I don't mind. I think, I think as, as Doug had said, there's a great bunch of guys on there with a lot of common sense, so it shouldn't be very difficult.
So, so the other question then is, do you want to, I haven't been here when the board has done this, but do you want to the board officially appoint this group of individuals as the, as the building committee or do you want that to come on a, on a different agenda?
Should we do it right by the book in terms of committee membership? Applications and works?
Yeah, we certainly can, we don't have any applications from any of these folks yet. That's why it was just a discussion item, so.
Well.
Plus, one of the things I was wondering is e- even if they all might be interested from a stakeholder standpoint, are they all interested in actually being on the building committee? I mean, you know, maybe that's the discussion that the stakeholder group could have.
Yeah, we can have that and this can come back to the board at a later date.
Yeah, I mean, I, I suggest that we pull together a description for the committee and then have to fill out applications by the book.
If, if, if I might, I mean, our, our firefighters, we already have information on them or else they wouldn't be doing what they're doing. I guess so I might exclude them and get something from Chris and Tom because they're not on a committee or related to the town in any fashion.
Yeah, Jeff agrees with that. I, I do too, if that's okay with Denise and Doug.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Okay, is that everything?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, so next we have just the announcement of future meetings. We have a special select board, oh, we have a special select board meeting on June fifteenth. And that is to go over the, is it the warrants, right?
Yeah, yeah, so the board needs to, once the planning board meets on Thursday, they'll be taking recommendations, recommended votes on the land use ordinance amendments. The budget committee met last week and sided with the select board on all the recommendations for the budget items that we changed, the budget adjustments. So at the fifteenth meeting, and it doesn't have to be at five-thirty, it can be, it can be earlier, it's up to the board. But your only action item really will be to approve the town meeting warrant so that we can order, we can get all the ballots in order and all of that sort of thing.
So we can do one of two things. I know we discussed this, Bill, the possibility, but, but then there was an issue that maybe we couldn't do it, so I'm, I'm asking you. There was a possibility that we had discussed that we could do away with the meeting, the regular board meeting on the twenty-second by handling everything on the fifteenth. Or we could just have that very short meeting on the fifteenth and still have to do our meeting on the twenty-second. Is that still a possibility, Bill, or not?
I, I would, I would say that you should have both meetings simply because there's no way that, there's a lot of items that the select board has to act on on that last meeting on June twenty-second for end of year for the, getting prepped for the next fiscal year to start July one. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be ready to have those available.
Okay.
Just I'd have to have them ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to have them ready by this Wednesday and that just isn't gonna.
Can't do that.
Something's gonna happen. And I'm actually, I'm actually going to be off on Wednesday because it is my daughter's high school graduation, so.
Oh, great, great. So, so it will be a very short meeting on the fifteenth, but we do unfortunately need to do that. And then, as Bill said, the twenty-second. And then July thirteenth is a regular select board meeting. Are we thinking that we can, where is that meeting? In the second meeting in July? Have we thought about whether or not we have to have that one?
The, that would be the, the first one, it's July thirteenth. It's late.
I, I'm sorry, I mean the sec-, no, the second one after July thirteenth.
Um, I've got to look at the schedule for town meeting and I've got to look at the order, the, the governor's latest order when it comes to elections and public hearings and all of that sort of thing.
Okay. Okay. Doug, did you have your hand up? No, you were just.
No, I was drinking my ice tea.
Yeah, you were, you were waving around your pen at some point, so I didn't know if that was a hand raise or not. Okay. All right, so we need a, a motion to recess and convene as wastewater commissioners?
I move the board recess and convene as wastewater commissioners.
Second.
Okay, Denise seconds it. Doug?
Yeah.
Denise?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Bill and Megan?
Yeah, so I'm going to turn this completely over to Megan so she can walk you through the wastewater budget. And if you've got questions, please, you know, along the way, ask them as they, as they come up.
So I guess I'll just start in the administration budget to go through the highlights. There's only three departments in this budget. Not a lot has changed in the administration budget. The wages and benefits were all determined when you finalize your general fund budget, so there's not much that we can do there. Some of the big increases in wages are because we increased the amount of time dedicated for those positions to wastewater. We did increase legal fees. We're anticipating a bond anticipation note for the start of the sewer extension project, which will require bond counsel as well as the need to pay for actual bond counsel when we go to do the bond through the bond bank. So we did increase that. We increased the amount dedicated to liens and discharges. We're going to start doing wastewater liens quarterly instead of once a year. We have a large number of aging receivables for wastewater and I think the best way to combat that is to go to monthly billing instead of quarterly billing and quarterly liens instead of annual liens. So you'll also notice the main water billing charges has doubled and that's because we're going to that monthly billing. Hopefully starting in July. And then the revenues are designed to offset the expenses in the administration budget as well as the operations budget, so the billing fees have gone up. We're not anticipating enough of the sewer extension project to be complete to increase the entrance fees. So we're leaving that the way that it was. And then the lien fees are a direct reimbursement, so if we get more lien fees, then it will show up there. Are there any questions on the administration budget?
I just wondered when, it sounds like some of what we're doing in increasing fees and costs is because we have late payers and aging receivables is, do we have a way to recoup those costs to us for the people who have caused those costs?
Yeah, we eventually can lien and foreclose on the property the same way as we would if people didn't pay their property taxes.
Well, I mean, recover the, our interim costs for having to lien, you know, we, we have to go through some work and then eventually they pay. But do they make us whole when they pay for what costs we incurred because they were late paying?
Yes, when they finally do pay, they pay all of those fees associated with us going through that additional work. Plus, they, plus they have to directly reimburse us for any fees to us, so they pay the certified mailing charges, the filing fees at the registry of deeds. They have to pay all of that.
And your time and having to assess all of that and figure it all out.
Well, there really isn't much in the state statute that allows us to bill out our time for that process. There's a set fee that we can charge for going through that, but that's really all and it just covers a portion of what it actually costs us in time to go through the process. But we're hoping that going to monthly billing will alleviate some of that because honestly, a lot of people probably just forget that they get it. They get the bill once every three months. They don't pay it right when they get it. They might forget that they have gotten it. So we're hoping that that will, we're hoping that that will decrease some of that aging receivables.
Mark, you had your hand up?
Yeah, Megan, this is a question for you, I think more so with maybe some of the board members with a couple of years in. We used to get information on people that were tardy in their payments. And we as a wastewater commission used to have to go over them. And we did something, I can't remember what, but we were given a list of, of those that were and what the tally was of what they were, what they owed us. Whatever happened to us doing that?
So the state, there used to be a requirement with the state in order to lien that you got, the wastewater commissioners had to go through a commitment process, much like you would property taxes. But they removed that part of the statute. So there is no commitment process. The bill that they get is essentially their commit, your commitment to them to pay it.
Do you have a number off the top of your head ballparking what is currently owed us?
Uh, at the end of April, we had over three hundred thousand in our accounts receivable for wastewater.
You see, that's, that's what I remember fellow board members is there's a significant amount of money in the past and it sounds like there is now too.
It's been a problem since I started and trying to come up with a way to reduce that amount has been challenging, but I'm hopeful that doing the monthly billing and leaning more frequently will help us reduce that number drastically.
Just to comment on that too, if you think, if you think about the monthly billing, and one of the reasons I supported this when we were talking, going through the wastewater budget in the process, if you think about a quarterly bill, people tend to forget to pay it. Whereas, whereas a monthly bill, it goes in the queue with everything else, so the thought there, even though it costs us a little bit more, quite a bit more to do the monthly bills, we think that that will reduce our amount that's receivable, that's, that's outstanding, because generally when those liens are placed on those, on this, for, for lack of paying the sewer charges, the wastewater charges, the payments come in with an exception, you know, with the exception of a few, you know, one or two. So I, I think that going to the monthly billing, as Megan has said, will really make a difference in that, in that receivables number.
And going to the quarterly lien process, it reduces that timeframe in which they have to pay. So right now we're doing it every twelve months, doing it every three months will shorten that window some for those people that wait for that lien notice to come every time.
Well, I, I certainly hope you move forward on this. I, I should have known, but again, I'm kind of shocked at that kind of receivable.
Yeah, it certainly doesn't help anything. It doesn't help our cash flow. And it, it doesn't look good in our financial statements either to have an aging receivable that high. Are there any other questions in the administration budget?
I don't think so.
Okay, the next one is the operations budget. The watered-in current contract isn't changing. We keep the same amount for three years. So that's two hundred and fifty-nine thousand and that includes the two people that watered-in current hire to maintain our system here as well as other items that go into that contract. The Camden Treatment Plant and Rockland Treatment Plant costs have gone up for two reasons. One is their estimated budget increases, rate fees like ours. The next is, is that we have an inflow problem. We have not been able to figure out where the inflow problem is and how much is contributing. Even after doing the basement studies and continuing to camera our systems, we're, we have not been able to determine where the inflow is coming from. So because we have been paying Camden and Rockland more than what we're billing out, wastewater has seen an operational deficit for the last two years. So I have increased the fees, the, what we're paying Camden and Rockland slightly to try to help cover that inflow problem. When we get to the capital budget, we've also increased the amount of money that we're dedicating to cameraing our system to see if we can locate where that actual inflow problem is.
I was going to say, just to, just to refresh people's minds, the inflow problem, if we were to. the inflow problem, if we were to get a hundred percent of it, is about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So it's a significant chunk if we can find it.
Which, which some of that we have been able to find, and we have reduced the problem. We had some, some pumps that were pumping into the system. We had some roof drains that were connected to the system. But what we found isn't enough to cover our overall problem.
I, I found this part of it a little bit upsetting, kind of on a triangle sort of basis. For Bill's benefit, this has been an ongoing problem. Well, for a long time, but we thought we'd started to address it at least a couple of years ago under the previous town manager. And it was important to us for a couple of reasons. One is obviously we don't want to be paying for that inflow that we shouldn't be having. But perhaps even more importantly is when Camden upgrades their sewer system, we're gonna get assigned a number based on our usage, and if it uses that that additional inflow that shouldn't be there, that number will, that increased number will be with us for a long time. So sort of a question I bring up, I really don't know much about Woodward and Curran. We've been with them for a long time, and I haven't had really any complaints that I know of, but shouldn't they be taking more responsibility and leadership in identifying this inflow problem that's been going on for a couple of years? You know, it's gonna be critical that we get a handle on this before Camden does their improvement, so the final leg of the triangle is I'd like to put the squarely back in Bill's lap to see if he can't track some of this down before we're saddled with it for twenty years.
Yeah, and I am working with Woodard and Curran when it comes to this. They, they obviously, everything has stopped again because of the pandemic, but they had issued a report shortly before the pandemic, and they're just as frustrated, I think, as everybody is, have not been able to identify the majority of this inflow problem, so they haven't given up on this. It's just a matter of getting back to work on it, which I anticipate they'll be doing fairly shortly. And, and it is, it, it's not an easy one to find, and you're never gonna find a hundred percent. I mean, you know, you can't fool ourselves in thinking that we'll ever find a hundred percent of the inflows. But if we can find a significant portion of it, then it certainly will help us, so I am continuing to work with them on this issue, and we'll pick it back up again.
Yeah, I mean, are, are there other outside consultants that Woodward and Curran could work with to help them get to the bottom of this? Again, it's, we've sort of been kicking around for a couple of years, not just during the coronavirus, so again, I'd like to, I would hope that there'd be some way we could get a resolution and get it down to a reasonable number.
Is this sort of unique to Rockport, or is this just something towns typically have an issue with inflow like this?
It was, it was reported to me by a Camden select board member that it had been brought up to previous boards prior to my arrival. I brought it up, and Rick started to implement the search, and that's how we determined that we had, you know, a significant amount of unnecessary water being treated, which as Doug had said, will ultimately come back and and be charged to us over a twenty-year period based on volume. So it, it's, it was going on prior, well, it was beyond our, Doug and my three years, so it's been four or five years.
The Rock, like Camden doesn't have an inflow prob, that's not something that just goes with the territory, there's something.
Yeah.
Most towns that have a sewer system have some sort of an inflow problem unless it's a brand-new system. Our system is just over twenty years old in some parts, so we're getting to the point where we have to look at pipe replacement and pipe replacements going into pump stations. So that's something that we have built into the capital improvement plan starting this year, but it's not a problem unique to Rockport.
But, you know, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, but my understanding, and I think I could remember Rick saying it, that all things considered, Rockport actually has a fairly new sewer system. So that, again, the amount of inflow is out of proportion to the age of our system.
And it, and it's not a, a small volume. It's, it's hundreds of thousands of gallons, if I remember correctly, and I don't have the number. But it, it's not a volume that a system that's twenty years old should have. And if it does, there's a lot of something seeping out into somewhere beyond whatever we're pumping into Camden.
Yeah, well, and that's, and that's one of the, that's, that's the task for us, is to determine where that volume is coming from. And as Megan has said, we have identified several places where we've had cellar drains, some pumps, that type of thing that have been going into the system, and those are being corrected. But that doesn't, that's not gonna accomplish a, a huge amount, so the age of the system is, is not a very old system for wastewater systems.
And what I'll say, fellow board members, is I know that when they, what a little bit I've been following it, I mean, they found probably a dozen places, and that number might be a little high or might be low, but at least a dozen perhaps that were hooked up to it that we didn't even know about. So there's been a great deal of work put into it, but I think there's still more that could be done for our benefit in the long run.
There definitely is, Mark, and like I said, I will be working with Wood and Curran, you know, over the summer months, into the fall, to figure this out.
And where we did do the basement study through the summer and got all those specs shortly after the end of the summer, we don't really have enough data yet to determine whether what we, what the impact is of what we've found, because a lot of our sewer is on the ocean line and on Route One, and that doesn't see much traffic in the winter months. So it's gonna take us a year to see what that summer study, basement study even had for an impact.
And my, my other recollection is that it seemed to spike on rain events when we'd have heavy, heavy rain days, which leads me to believe that there might be drains somewhere along the highway that might be feeding into it. I don't know, but anyway, thanks, Bill, for following up.
The other item in this budget that has changed is the above-ground capital maintenance. And towards the front half of the budget, there's the five-year capital improvement plan. So the above items, above-ground items we plan to accomplish this year is to replace the flow meter and control panel for the Camden Street Pump Station. We're gonna do some arc flash assessments, which is, again, identifying possible problems that we could have. The five thousand dollars for miscellaneous controls or electrical equipment is for any items that we might have to fix or replace on a pump station. The new item that we added this year is the pump station miscellaneous repairs. There's fifty thousand dollars there, and that's essentially to fix piping that is coming into our pump stations. And then we have Ship Street Pump Replacement. We are gonna have to update our alarm systems on our pumps. Three of our pump stations still report to Seaco Security, and then Seaco Security reports them to Woodard and Curran. We, all of our other pumps are on an automatic notification system, so instead of going to that third party, the alarms will go directly to Woodard and Curran. There, we're gonna continue to put money into the reserve account for the treatment plant upgrades for Camden. And what essentially we're doing there is building up to what our estimated annual debt payment is gonna be to them. And then, like we do for our other departments, we're gonna continue to invest in the truck equipment that they use so that we're staying on schedule with that. Wastewater is set up so that a capital investment stays steady. So every year, we have a deposit of forty thousand dollars into our capital reserve. We plan on expending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that every year. And if, for whatever reason, if we have a year that goes over that two hundred and fifty thousand, then we use the reserve so that we can keep it steady. So this year, we will be using a hundred and four thousand dollars out of that reserve. And then the SAMASAT reimburses us directly for any of their usage, so you see the SAMASAT charge and then the offsetting revenue for that. For debt and capital maintenance, we currently have two bonds that we're paying on. One is ours for the latest Route One extension in September of two thousand fourteen. And then there's a budgeted principal-only payment in here for the new sewer extension project, which you'll see was in there last year, but that's also a hundred percent offset by TIF revenue. So if we don't make the payment, then we don't use the TIF revenue, so it really has no impact to the debt service fees. It has no impact to the user rates. If we don't pay it out, then we won't transfer the money from the TIF. The below-ground capital maintenance is staying about the same, and then there's that deposit to the capital reserve. The use of the TIF is for our bond payments, and then the debt service billing is what we bill out to the users to cover the rest of our debt and capital maintenance work. So with all those things considered, with the budget as it is now, the quarterly debt service fee is seventy-four dollars and three cents a quarter. And then the usage fee will be nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents per cubic foot. So that is an increase of sixty dollars a year per user.
So five dollars a month.
Any questions?
So remember, folks, don't flush those disinfectant wipes.
No, do not. Even the flushable ones are not flushable.
All right. Mark, were you about to say something?
I was. I was getting ready to make a motion.
Okay, why didn't you do that?
And it's slightly different than what's printed, but it says, "I move the wastewater commission has approved the fiscal year 2021 wastewater budget as submitted."
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, call the question, Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I move the board reconvene as the select board.
Second.
All right, Doug? Denise?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Megan.
Yes, thank you.
As always.
I, I do have one little non-item thing, Madam Chair, if I might.
Go ahead, Mark.
The two items that I'm working on for the report, one is done, one is nearly done, and if anybody would like to see them, I could make them available.
This is the annual report?
Yes. The write, the write-up for the in-memory and dedication. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, good. Yep, I'll get it around.
I circulated that.
Yep.
Okay. Next item is the Select Board Liaison Reports. Doug, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, briefly, no finance committee, no library committee. Parks Committee meets on Wednesday. Hopefully, the bids for the library landscaping project will go out a little bit later this week, and if they do, they will be back, they will be due back by around July second, so that that should be interesting, and we're looking forward to that. From a planning board standpoint, as we noted earlier, on Thursday, there's a public hearing to address multiple land use ordinances. A lot of it is just routine housekeeping and some minor corrections. But there are some interesting topics that I'm sure will get a lot of attention, and that has to do with the various parking recommendations and the two citizens petitions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Denise?
My committees haven't met since the last select board meeting, and I'm assuming you'll talk about Midco Solid Waste.
Okay, Jeff?
No meeting for capital, no meeting for rec, no meeting for comp. However, committee meeting comes this week.
Doug, you had a comment?
A question for Denise, actually. We lost over it so quickly. I know that the Opera House at some point was talking about, Opera House Committee was at some point talking about doing some blackout curtains or something for up in the balcony area. Do you know if any progress has been made on that?
Well, I, I sort of did my own home remedy for that with some foam board and duct tape and little handles that Burke made to put on them, so we've got just little things that can be stuck up in the windows there.
And presumably, we haven't had a chance to try them out yet.
Nope, nope. And I haven't had a chance to demonstrate to Drew how they work, but they're over there, and seems to solve the problem.
Okay. Mark, did you have anything to report?
Nothing since the last, and Doug had mentioned the parks coming up on Wednesday.
Midco Solid Waste, we have, we have some, we have bids for hauling contract that saves us a lot of money. Bill, do you recall off the top of your head how much that was?
Off the top of my head, I think it's like seventy-seven thousand dollars or something like that.
Yeah, a year.
Yeah, a year.
Yeah, it's really significant. So anyway, so we're, we're talking about that. We're talking about the the contract, the people who have been working on the contract, being some of the board members and our new facility manager, Michael Martounas, and Dave St. Laurent, being our ongoing, for a little bit longer consultant. They all recommend, very much recommend that we do a long-term hauling contract, which goes beyond the number of years that the Midco Solid Waste can contract, and without going back to the towns for approval. Is that right? I, I think that we, we had to go back and take a look at all this, but we think it's, we'd have to go back to the towns for approval as opposed to the boards. If we go back, have to go back to the select board for approval for a longer contract, that's If we go back, have to go back to the select board for approval for a longer contract, that's, you know, pretty straightforward. But I think we've determined that we probably have to go back to the towns for approval for the four towns. So we're, we're figuring out ways that we can, you know, that we can do a contract. And, you know, obviously validly under our governing documents, but for as long a period as we can to lock in that contractor and the favorable costs. Bill, do you have anything to add to that? No, okay. So we're also looking at some structural issues that, you know, is probably something that we'll have to discuss at, at an executive meeting sometime, because it would deal with agreements that we have and so forth, contractual agreements that we have. But there are some, you know, some big structural issues that I think have been kind of out there in the background that we're, you know, we're looking to maybe take on and tackle soon. And any questions? Okay, if we, motion to adjourn.
I second that. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Deborah.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. I suppose we're all in favor. Denise? Jeff? Mark? Doug?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Deborah, yes, okay. All right.
All right.
Take care.
Zoom will do, the fifteenth will be by Zoom.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that should be pretty easy. It should be fairly quick. Just one quick note about that, I know in the past, this board has gone through individual articles, warrant articles, and provided recommendation on each. There is nothing in state law that says you have to do that. What I would usually recommend in that case is that, you know, somebody provide recommendations for the entire warrant. And then if there are items or articles that the board wants to process individually, then you do that. But most of them are, are easy because a lot of them are the business articles or the budget that you've already approved anyway. So that's the way that I've handled that in the past. And the attorneys that I've talked to, they've all agreed that that's, that's fine. You don't have to do them individually. We obviously will cover the language and the fireworks straw poll, if you will. So I have that. One article that will be different other than that is language for what I call a continuing resolution. Because it's a referendum, if a budget item fails, there'll be an article that will say to allow the town spend up to, you know, one-third or whatever of the, of the previous year's budget in that particular article that may have failed, so that we can address it at some point later on at a town meeting. And again, that's just a continuing resolution.
Okay, Jeff, did you have a?
Yeah, did we set a time for that meeting on the middle of the month?
We did, we didn't.
No, I mean, is there, is there any reason not to do it at five thirty?
Five thirty's fine. Wanted to make sure we do it.
No, it's a question because I know that we kept that coming. Okay.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Well, next week.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bye.